All right, welcome everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order. This Livingston City Commission meeting on January sixteenth of two thousand and twenty four is five thirty-two. A vocal please.
Chair Kale.
Here.
Vice Chair News.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
President.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Willage.
Here.
Of course.
Thank you. All right, well, we will start off at the top of the agenda with public comment. This is for public comment for items that are not on our agenda tonight. Individuals are reminded that public comment should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, control jurisdiction or advisory power. If anyone would like to make public comment for items not on the agenda tonight, please feel free to do that. We'll start in the room and you can come up to the podium and please sign in and then give us your name and address. Any public comment?
My name is Brian Monahan. This weekend he brought to attention gap in the resources. The warming center is next to John the Coordinating, what I understand was a record turnout for individuals there. But they did a code blue, which means the individuals can stay within the the resource of the warming center during the day. Most of the time, we have one resource that's available during the day for these individuals when they get out of the warming center and that's the the library. We have been talking to the manager over there and are doing some social services with those people on item diet basis at their community room. But there is nowhere from seven AM until ten AM for these individuals to go. The code blue only goes effect that's below ten degrees. I ask as eleven really make everything okay. I don't know if you guys are familiar. My group of volunteers covers about half the food program that loves and fishes. We're cooking fifteen nights this month. They're with them. We have volunteered as a group and reached out to a couple of organizations, try and provide a space from seven AM to ten AM. We will staff it with volunteers seven days a week. So far, we have not had success. I would ask if maybe there is a a location or something within the municipal system that we could provide that and I assure you wouldn't just be idle time. We would be doing day planning. We would be doing job searches. We would be doing resume building, trying to find some adult reeducation options connecting them with social services during that time. Again, we have tried to no avail to reach out to the groups in our in our resource community for a space to do that. So I just would humbly like to bring that to the attention of the commissioners and know that we will staff it. And and it's the same people who are cooking for for this demographic in half the time. And we built a great rapport with them. It gives us amazing outreach and it builds a lot of trust with them. But the work that we're doing with them now in the library by ten o'clock, once you spent three hours outside in the cold, they're just kind of shut for the day. They just are are burned out. They come in. They just want to take a nap and if they're able to start their day with a plan, even if it goes out the window by noon, if they come back and do that again, and and if we can leverage this resource of humanity and compassion of having a warm place for them to go in the mornings. Again, we are eager to be of service. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Brian. Any other public comments in the room for items not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, I'll go online. Anyone online that would like to give public comment for items not on the agenda? Feel free to raise your hand or just come off mute. All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Consent items. Commissioners, do we have any that are there any consent items that commissioners would like to pull? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
Let's have pulled a minutes.
All right. We will pull consent item A. There's a motion for others.
Yeah, we'll make a motion to approve consent items B through D.
Second.
That's a motion by News and a second by Lyons. On favor?
All right.
Hi, motion passes. Commissioner News.
So in the minutes on page nine, the fourth paragraph or the fifth complete sentence. It says she is referring to me, expressed agreement with Commissioners Will, Commissioner Willish about infrastructure in older neighborhood in regarding to adding ADUs. I would just clarify that I agreed about older infrastructure in neighborhoods, but I was also adding that it's still less expensive to upgrade existing infrastructure than to build new sprawling infrastructure.
Mr. Gager, we have that.
We can absolutely make that adjustment to minutes.
Thanks.
Yes. Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Can I just make a motion to approve consent item A with the amendment that I indicated? Thanks.
Second, second, I'd like. On favor?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Great. All right, we do have two proclamations this evening. Our first proclamation is a proclamation declaring July second two thousand and twenty-four, the hundredth anniversary of the historic Livingston Roundup Parade Day. Whereas the city of Livingston, Montana is proud of our long tradition and history of kicking off Livingston Rodeo Roundup with a parade that involves local businesses, community organizations and families. And whereas the annual parade has been a significant event that has brought together our community and the surrounding areas for a century showcasing our history, enduring spirit, and the strong sense of community that characterizes our great town. And whereas the Centennial Parade not only commemorates the past one hundred years of parades, but also honors the generations of Livingston residents who have contributed to the fabric of our community through their participation and support. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize and commend all those who have worked tirelessly to organize and participate in the parade each year, ensuring its success, continuity as we reach this historic milestone. And whereas the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana invites all members of the community and surrounding areas to join in the celebration of this historic event, fostering a sense of pride, gratitude and fellowship in our great community. Now, now therefore be resolved on behalf of the Livingston City Commission, I, Carrie Kale, Chair, do hereby thank the Livingston Area Chamber of Commerce for its work in organizing the parade in two thousand and twenty-four and also the many volunteers that have made this annual event possible. And do proclaim July second, two thousand and twenty-four as the hundred, the hundredth anniversary of the historic Livingston Roundup Rodeo Parade Day Celebration in Livingston, Montana. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kale. I look forward to attending the one hundred parade will be my second parade and I've said it once and I'll say it again. Sounds like a bucking good time to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any anything?
See all of it.
All right. Thank you. All right, we do have another proclamation. We have an Arbor Day proclamation. Proclamation of the Livingston City Commission declaring April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four as Arbor Day in the city of Livingston, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and world. And whereas trees can be can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving up paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our community increase property values, enhance the economic vital vitality of businesses, business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, whether they are planted, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore be resolved on behalf of the Livingston City Commission, I, Carrie Kale, do hereby declare April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four to be Arbor Day in Livingston, Montana. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Kale. I feel like I want to go hug a tree right now, but I will save it for April. Thank you.
And I hope others have watered their trees before this freeze came because we got awfully dry late in the season. Anyone else? Nebraska. Your hometown, your home state.
Yep.
So, thank you, Tom, Nebraska.
All the little Nebraska schoolchildren have to learn about this. Second, I was said.
All right, moving on. So we are moving on to action items, action item A, Presentation Regarding Montana Street MDT Service Transportation Program Urban Project.
Thank you, Chair Kale. I am excited to introduce the commission to this project and we have our Public Works Director Shannon Holmes as well as Dave Gates from the Montana Department of Transportation to talk a little bit more about the project. So I will welcome them up here and to introduce both the program and the project itself.
Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair Kale and members of the commission. It's been a pleasure. This is two meetings in a row that I've got to speak for you. Tonight, as City Manager Gager mentioned, this is Dave Gates. He is the Butte District Reconstruction Engineer. He is also a member of our Livingston Park County Transportation Coordinating Committee team. So tonight, the presentation of Dave is going to go over the program itself and then we'll get into kind of the details of of the Montana Street Project Budget and kind of timeline for that project to come into fruition. So I'll turn it over to you, Dave.
Right on, thanks. All right. Thank you for that introduction for the benefit of the audience and the commission. I'm just going to be reading off some notes from on my end so I can succinctly capture some of this. So recognizing that maybe this is the first time some of you heard from MDT or specifically the of what the SDP program is, okay? So I tend to get long-winded, throw a board at me if I need to slow down or or redirect. Okay, so the Montana Urban Highway Program. What I'm going to outline in this presentation is define is just basically talk through what the definition of urban, urban areas and the urban highway system is. The Livingston Urban Area Boundary and Urban Routes. And briefly, Shannon briefly mentioned the the Transportation Coordination Committee. I'll touch on that. Urban Highway Program Funding Eligibilities, the nomination process and what the city's urban balance is. So on here, starting with some basic definitions, the Census Bureau essentially categorizes large, medium and small urban areas. These area definitions are reviewed once every ten years following the distribution of decennial census data. We we don't expect any changes following once all of the urban boundaries. Okay, so like your your boundaries are set. We've gone through that with the TCC. So there's no modifications proposed. Moving on to the next.
Can I ask a quick?
Yes.
Kind of weedsy question. On this, on this map of the districts, there's an asterisk with Bozeman indicating that there is an MPO for a population of greater than fifty thousand. Is that going to happen?
Yeah. Yeah, that governor signed that here at the first of the year. So we've, we've been collaborating with local officials for the last about year, a little bit more on getting set up for the MPO. So that has kicked off in addition to.
Okay, and will Livingston be part of of that MPO?
No, the Bozeman MPO boundary does not extend to Livingston.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. So this map outlines the urban areas by district. Mention on the Butte District Reconstruction Engineer and he has five districts across the state. Urban area is classified as cities with a population over five thousand as rep as reported in the latest federal census, okay? Urbanized areas and the other are cities with population of fifty thousand or greater. Before the census data, we have three, but we have two more coming, which is both in. Following each census, all existing urban boundaries are reviewed to better follow the new census generated boundaries as well as to smooth those boundaries. As well as capture areas that are expected to experience high rates of growth within the next ten years, such as new subdivisions. Again, this process and these boundaries are used to determine urban areas and MPO area populations, which are used to reapportion federal funds. SDP Urban by three oh three and PL. Finally, the urban boundary is also used to distinguish between urban and rural functional classification and urban and secondary highway systems. Lot of stuff. Moving on to the next slide here, the urban highway systems. I guess I don't need to repeat it if you're seeing it and the audience can see what what that means. The big, the big item on the urban highway system is noting that these are roads that have been functionally classified as either urban materials or collectors. And that's what justifies them to be able to be placed on the urban highway system and recommended or approved by this by the commission, the highway commission. This slide isn't a great map and you can, you can see the roads in orange or gold. Those are permission designated on the urban highway system.
So when it's, we just want to be a little more specific. So starting on the kind of northeast part of town, Garnier, we've got Gallatin Street, we've got Front Street, Montana, Star Road. We have Seventh. And we have Yellowstone and Gallatin on the north side of the tracks, south side, Main Street, B Street, H Street, Geyser, River Drive, Few Vista. And then south of the I ninety interchange, actually Love's Lane is is on that urban classification, so.
We can move on to the next. Again, this is another slide that just talks about where the funding and how the distribution formula works for it. The big thing on this and these urban areas receive federal dollars from the SDP Urban Highway System that are used to allocate or are are used to help address the needs on the system. So again, just another way of saying where the funding comes from from federal aid and then how it's utilized by local agencies that have roads contained in the system. Moving on to urban project eligibility, eligibility is essentially your dollars can be used for from preservation through capital improvement based on the priorities established from your local TCC. And they have the dollar, the SDPU dollars have to be spent on SDPU designated channeling systems. For me, when I can't, these are your, your SDPU allocation that goes to the city has to specifically be spent on the SDP system, not overloads. Briefly touched on and now since now's the slide to talk about it, how urban SD projects or urban funded projects are advanced to a project priorities determined by action from the TCC. A letter from the local officials to MDT informs of priority. MDT reviews the project to assure it's physically constrained or or of magnitude that informs that it can be deliverable, right? What I like to tell folks is projects never shrink in scope. They always grow in scope and we always start with best of intention. And that's a lot of what Shannon and I have been doing together for the last, I don't know.
Year and a half.
Year and a half of based on what the TCC's recommendation for the next urban priority is, we, we took that, looked at it and evaluated what options and alternatives would result in maximizing a project to match what budget you have available. And that's key for the SDPU program because in order for the Montana Department of Transportation's commission to approve a project to move forward, it has it demonstrates that it's physically constrained. And if it's not, then the the balance has to be made up by the local agency that's proposing it.
And just to kind of add to that, so in a perfect world, we would, we would have loved to have had all of Montana Street from Sunrise all the way to Second Street. And that's initially what we nominated, full length of 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 that street within the urban highway system. Field visits, running estimates, we had to narrow that length down to basically a four to five block stretch.
So another point to be made of that is whenever federal aid is involved, of course, there's processes that are required in order to ensure that the fed federal aid dollars are satisfying the needs and expectations from the federal highway and the government, right? So anytime we do anything outside of a basic preservation project that requires updating eighty-eight or curb ramps. So, so there again, that's another challenge when we're looking at trying to balance what the magnitude of a project is, especially when capital improvement is needed. Moving on to the next slide. Kind of just running through this stuff. As of the last estimate, the STU you, you guys' urban funds balance is hovering right around three and a half million dollars, a little under three and a half million dollars and you have an estimated annual allocation of one hundred and eighty-three thousand, okay? Hopefully that's the spark notes version of the program. You have any questions about the program in general that I can help answer?
Commissioners, any questions?
Just a quick, we're clarifying one. So our what's available to us is about three and a half million, right?
Yes. Little wonder then.
For what? Yeah, your talk.
Yep.
What we're talking about. Which I yeah, read early. Okay. Cool.
Thank you, question. Shannon, do you? I think this came up, this particular stretch of road, it might have been about a year and a half ago. You said you've been working on it a year and a half. Can you remind me of like what step of the process that was? Because I remember you coming before us with this before.
So about a year and a half ago, you're in September, October, to be exact, is when we actually nominated this project at the Transportation Coordinating Committee Member Meetings that are quarterly.
Okay, so it's just the very first step.
It was the first step and 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 that committee actually voted and it was unanimous approval to be able to move this project forward.
Thank you probably may remember.
So that is probably, if there are any other questions, that's probably a perfect segue to just give you the history of of Livingston and utilizing this program. So prior to me starting in two thousand and thirteen, actually, the H Street Reconstruction was the last project that that we utilized this program to redo the street. The city went in beforehand and and replaced the water in the sewer mains. And then MDT came in behind and and did the street project. Two thousand and eight through ten is when that feasibility study for the separated rail crossing, the city went into a memorandum of understanding in two thousand and ten and we allocated all of our urban funds to the Star Road Underpass until two thousand and twenty. In hindsight, I would have loved to have had the flexibility, Main Street, B Street are both on the urban system. We could have actually utilized this program to help redo our downtown and lessen some of the tax burden on our residents. That being said, our hands were tied with the MOU for Star Road. In two thousand and nineteen, when when the Star Road Underpass went on the ballot and failed is basically when we requested that the MOU for the Star Road Underpass be terminated. So that leads us into two thousand and twenty-two. We went through the TCC process, nominated the project. Dave and his team, myself and and the city team have met out on Montana Street. We walked it and and basically as much as I would like to improve that Montana Street from Sunrise to Second. Given today's construction costs, we really had to to narrow down the scope of the work to that twelfth street to seventh street corridor. And when you look at at the city's urban route map, we're in pretty good shape with with almost all of our urban routes, South Park Street, Main and B Street have been updated. H Street, Geyser is in good shape. Few Vista has had, we did the CTEP sidewalk project. We have sidewalks from H all the way to the schools. River Drive is a little up in the air, just given where we're at with the Army Corps of Engineers, looking at certified levees, things of that nature. So really, when you look at even the urban routes on the north side of the tracks, Montana Street really stands out on on that it's not even close to meeting us our city standards for really sidewalks ADA accessibility. We have no street lights. That area over the last six years is really fully built out with the exception of Dan Fall's project there, which has moved and moving forward. So it really was an easy decision and again unanimously supported by the Transportation Coordinating Committee. So, you know, that being said, steps moving forward. The next step would be as far as a project delivery method, we have two options. We can turn it all over and give MDT the keys and have them do all the survey, design, construction administration, or my preference would be that we utilize the lag process or the local agency or and follow the guidelines and and we self perform that work with our city engineer TDNH. And I really feel we can save a lot of money in that design, surveying, environmental work and hopefully that results in more work that we can do another block or two for the street, but we'll we'll figure that out as we move forward with the design process. So that being said, MDT does need us to either commit on those two types of project delivery and in working with Mr. Gager will will probably provide some sort of acknowledgement or or support from the commission at a, maybe the next city commission meeting on maybe pursuing that one process. Once that's in place, it goes back to MDT. They draft an agreement on how the project is going to be handled. It goes in front of the Transportation Commission. We sign that and really, you know, we're looking at probably FY twenty-eight to twenty-nine before this project would even start construction. One of the benefits of the lag process, so. As long as I'm the director. And I have support from the commission, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be supportive of replacing. Brand new streets with curb and gutter and sidewalks without replacing the infrastructure underneath the ground, so. Through the budget process, we, we put this project into our CIP program, it's last year. Obviously, we want to replace the water mains, the sewer. Hopeful, we will have a stormwater utility in the foreseeable future, we're gonna go ahead and put in the stormwater collection mains as well. This project will pay for this, the endlets and, and the laterals to connect to that. This is another reason why this, this is a great location, I'm very confident we can come up with an agreement with. The Livingston ditch to be able to put some sort of storm scepter and pre-treatment before the stormwater is discharged into. Into the ditch is, and that's where it's already going anyway, so. So we have, we have some things to do utility wise before we rebuild the street. And I think the lag process will only complicate that and we can turn it basically into one project where. We're gonna follow the, the federal guidelines for the streetscape project, but we can, we can incorporate. Our specs for the utility work to, and get that work done beforehand.
Can I touch on that just a little bit more? So I. Want to use this opportunity to just. Drive home what Shannon's asking for with respect to the. Local delivery, so the normal process for MDT. In, in this next step, once a transportation committee, coordination committee has made a nomination for a project to the system for, for SDP. We coordinate with the local agency tender into a funding agreement, the funding agreement outlines specifics. About MDT handling overall contract administration and how overages on the project would work. And so, once that. Agreement is authorized by both parties, MDT then handles overall project development and delivery. And. The opportunity that Shannon's presenting with respect to. Leveraging the light process to deliver the project is unique in that we haven't. Done that on these magnitude of projects. However, it's a great opportunity for you guys to do it because of the other capital improvement project that you're planning to do. In advance of it, in fact. That's a requirement of, of the program that we try to ensure happens with the local agency is that we don't want to construct a new facility. And a few years later, coming back to put a water lane or something. Is that?
Yep, thank you, I appreciate that. Any questions at this point?
Let me, I'm gonna stop us for just a minute, I'm gonna redirect to Mr. Gager for a moment and just, and then we'll get back to questions. Mr. Gager, what are you looking for from us this evening as well as we maybe are asking Shannon and Dan questions and where, where you'd like us to get to this evening, if you could give us that direction?
No, I, I, I appreciate it, you know, this, this item really is just simply a project update, it's been a year or so and. And it felt like before we took the next steps with MDT to start formalizing documents regarding project delivery and funding. I wanted to update the commission, give you folks the, the opportunity to. Express any thoughts you have on the project, not looking for anything specific.
Great. Questions for Shannon or other guests this evening?
Do you want us to ask questions or do you, is this also an appropriate time just for our thoughts and feedback?
I think questions or thoughts are given back now would be just fine, so. Anyone?
I have some thoughts. I, I believe I said this last time that you're up here, I like that stretch of road on Montana as I recognize, you know, I'm the only person at the front of the room that lives on that side of town. And you're right, all of Montana. Deserve some attention and still seven to twelve seems like a good, but I know every year, every spring you deal with. Runoff in that part of town too, so I'm sure that's on your mind. In addition to like where all of the traffic and people sort of end up. As they come out of the various neighborhoods on that, that part of town. So I like that stretch of town. My biggest concern is that when we look at the map. From seventh to twelfth street. On Montana. And I think about. You know, the hundreds of walks I've done in that neighborhood. I'm aware, acutely aware that there's not sidewalks everywhere. There's lots of parts of the neighborhoods that are unfinished in terms of like streets, gutters, sidewalks, I know you know this Shannon. And so I'm just thinking if one place is awfully convenient for people to walk and bike and it doesn't really connect to the rest of town, that's a concern that I have, so I'm just hopeful that. The city and the commission will be thinking about how to connect the, this new. Updated infrastructure to other parts of town and not just have an island of good biking for five blocks. And then. The other thing that I'm thinking about in terms of the process. I, I guess I would look to Mr. Gager for feedback on process, I recognize also that like one of the reasons we hired you is you. Have a special expertise in managing contracts and large infrastructure projects, so when it comes time to make that decision, I would really appreciate. You know, some education on our options and why you would lean one way or another. Yeah, that's my feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, others?
So I really appreciate you bringing that up. And I think this five block stretch really sets our template. And I can tell you as much as I appreciate having almost four and a half million dollars. Of this money to improve the street, there is a lot of bureaucracy that goes with it and that's why it's so expensive. And we can go and we can tie into that at twelfth street and take it to Sunrise. And really the. From seventh up to second. Having a stormwater utility and really looking at that a lot closer and dealing with that before we spend a lot, invest a lot of money in, in that steep slope. Given, given the challenges in the terrain. But I, I'm confident that we're, we're kind of setting the street standard in this block and we can tie on to it and extend as we continue through our capital. Programs.
I do have other questions, actually. Go ahead. Do you foresee that like this improvement, I know it's a long ways out, but do you foresee that it would help all those people down slope? Because I know they get hit so hard and their properties just get hit so hard every spring. And specifically for people don't live there, I'm talking about the runoff where it floods. People's backyards and their basements when it all comes down the hill.
So this is gonna be a significant improvement to stormwater on, on that area between really ninth down to seventh. And, and just. Imagine storm drain inlets like we have in the downtown that are really picking up all that surface water and taking them to underground. Being in, and, and, and then a storm scepter and pre-treating that water before it's discharged into the ditch. I'm really excited about that and, and Montana Street really, if you look at. Extending our stormwater network, it really where it lies with respect to say North Town and Ridgeview Trails and. In that area, it's, it's a wonderful place to really start our network on the north side of the tracks.
I agree. Thank you, that's, I think that's really exciting, especially for that huge neighborhood that gets to every year, thank you.
And I, I feel very fortunate and you know, again. That those storm drain inlets and at least the laterals. Are all, will be included in this project, so you know, when we, when we talk about fifteen inch stormwater pipe. We're really looking at about. Sixty thousand dollars of our work that we need per block, you know, to get that main. In, in the ground for their network to connect to, so I'm excited, I think it's.
Yeah, and then the fact.
I just wish, I just wish we could do the whole street really, with the, with the money we have available, that's.
But it's nice to have a, a close, a place close by to dump it into. To instead of having to drag it all the way down. To the river, so.
It sounds like a good start for the infrastructure, sort of your starting point on that side, so then.
I agree and I.
Thoroughly needed, yeah.
Yeah. So you know, with any project, there'll, there'll be more to come. And like I said, the next step will be, you know, getting your. Thoughts on utilizing the local agency process and then, then having the agreement back from MDT to be able to. Basically move forward in, in a direction and, and get started. And. You know, as excited as I am, it, it is nice to be able to talk about projects that aren't slated for construction until twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine, so we have a lot of time to. To educate the public and provide updates for you folks. I will say, and. When we have done the field visits, we've gotten a lot of support from the residents there and Dan Paul in particular and what he's planning on doing is are, have been very supportive. And are excited about it.
Okay. Great, thank you Shannon.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for your. All right. And let's move along. Action item B, Consolidated Land Use Board Bylaws, Mr. Gager.
Uh, thank you Chair Kale, the item before you, as you know, we, the city, you folks recently created a consolidated land use board to. Assume the powers that were previously delegated to the planning board and the zoning commission. And with the creation of that new board, we need some bylaws and so we have a. Attached bylaws for the commitment's consideration and adoption, and so I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Commissioners, questions from Mr. Gager?
So it. I noticed this. When looking at the next. Agenda item. But I see that. That there's alternating two-year terms. Are over, overlapping, I think it's written in here. And. You know, having never been privy to the creation of a new board. It's new to me to see like appointing folks for one, one year and then two years, can you just kind of like describe your thinking on that and? Yeah. I guess I'm, I'm. Thinking about, and again, this is maybe a little bit more silent on the next agenda item, but like. Fairness. When it comes to like the initial appointments. Yeah, absolutely, it's a, it's a great question, as you pointed out, both the, the bylaws and actually the, the enabling ordinance that was passed. In, in late twenty twenty-three established the, the overlapping offsetting terms and. That, that enabling ordinance did actually provide that three members would be appointed to initial one-year terms to achieve that overlapping. Outcome and, and it, it did identify three that were to be appointed for one-year terms, so that, that is. The, the genesis of, of really the next item and recommending some for one-year terms. Okay, that's the only question I have right now, thank you.
Yes, because I know Commissioner Lyons, when we. And I'm sure Commissioner Schwartz probably remembers this too, but when we, when the boards changed in the past, it was the same. Where there was alternating and then even like when Livingston's form of government, I remember. In the way back machine, back when the commissioners had, what was it, three-year, two-year, was it three-year terms? And the, the govern, the year, the terms for commissioners changed, they, they did something similar even for commissioners. For a while where they offset things, so it wouldn't be like all the whole.
Yeah, turning over, you have some experience on the. On the board, some continuity, so you're not starting over again every two years or.
So just to say that, just to say that I think it's like standard practice, it seems like from the stuff we've seen in the past that this is. Like what they do when they either change the policy or change the whole structure or start fresh. And by they, I mean, local governments. If that's helpful.
Thank you.
Other questions?
It's good to meet you, the bylaws, I can't find anything wrong with them.
I mean. We'll figure out what's wrong after. Like we do every time. Couple of years in, we'll realize.
Good start.
It's Dan for motion, we can open up for public comment after that.
I'll make a motion to approve bylaws of the Livingston Consolidated Land Use Board.
Motion by Schwartz, second by. Yeah. Willet, okay, sorry, I'm sorry that.
No worries.
I couldn't distinguish between the two of you, I need to, between my ears and butter.
You're fine, it's got speak up.
All right, so we've got a, a motion by Schwartz and a second by Willet, so let's go ahead and then open it up to public comment. And then we can have a discussion, so we'll start with folks in the room. Any public comments on? The bylaws for the Livingston Consolidated Land Use Board, feel free to come up to the podium. Make any comment in four minutes. Seeing none in the room, we'll go online, anyone online like to make public comment? Feel free to raise your hand or just come off mute. One more time, any public comment? All right, we'll close public comment. Commissioner, discussion deliberation. Anyone?
I'm good.
For the board, okay, well. Roll call please.
Chair Kale.
For.
Vice Chair Noots.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Commissioner Willet.
More than Francis. All right. Moving on to action item C, can sell, consolidated land use board appointments. Mr. Gager.
Thank you Chair Kale, the item before you is to staff the Consolidated Land Use Board and. I am, I, I'm pleased to say that the city received. Thirteen different applications. For the seven community seats on the Consolidated Land Use Board. And over the last week or so, I had the opportunity to meet with all thirteen candidates and conduct interviews with them and it was an absolute pleasure, we've got a lot of very. Committed volunteers in the community, which made the selection process incredibly difficult and so. You know, I, I will say, I, I, I tried to. Take into account many factors when making my recommendations. First and foremost, I think boards like these operate best when they represent a cross-section of the community and so. I have tried to, to do that in, in many ways, having both. Landowners, tenants and renters. Different professions are, are, I think represented by all of the applicants as, as you see, and I think one. Voice that, that was not maybe as well represented on, on past iterations of, of these boards as, as it could have been was. Folks from the development community who have some project experience and, and have, have worked through. Some, some of these larger applications, similarly small business owners. Within the community did not seem as, as well represented as, as they could have been on passports and so I've really worked to again create a, a good cross-section of, of folks. That said, I, I do welcome any, any comments or changes that the commission sees to to make, so I will stand for any questions you may have.
So I am gonna ask for questions, but before we get too deeply into this, I will remind you, we're talking about. Individuals and we should, we should keep our comments towards qualifications, experience. Potential. Conflicts, but reminding that we should not be talking about people. Personal, too personally, and I will bring us in if we go there, so just as a reminder. Questions?
I'm happy to go first, if you'd like somebody to. Are you looking for questions or you, before we have a motion, are you looking for a little bit of like feedback on the? Just for process?
Yeah. I think that we should probably ask questions and then have a little bit of a discussion, I don't think I want to get too far down the road with the. Motion until you.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I do, I think, I mean, I, I appreciate, I guess, hearing that, you know, Mr. Gager talked to all these people. One-on-one in our stead, thank you. Because that would be a whole different process if we had to do it in front of the, like with the whole commission, it could be unwieldy. I appreciate also. Looking through, you know. The applications and. Once again, we find ourselves in a situation where it's, it's the better problem to have, you know, like too many qualified people as opposed to. Desperately trying to fill seats and no one's interested in being involved in the. Desperately trying to fill seats and no one's interested in being involved in the local government. So I'm grateful to everyone that threw their name into the ring and. And it's very public, right? Put your application in a commission packet. We're somewhat desensitized, maybe, or becoming desensitized to it being up here, but it's still a thing. Um that requires some amount of vulnerability. Um I like knowing that there is a cross-section of people that have. You know, a fresher perspective, but experience or people that have some experience. And some time. And then there's some people, there's, I see some people on here that go way back to my beginning, the time I was on the commission. Um, so I I just think that's really helpful going in the conversation to know that's the mindset that Mr. Gager had. Which I think is reflective of the kind of feedback we're feeling in the past. I don't really have any questions about it right now.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Chair Kale, um. When do you think would be a good time for public comment?
I.
Given that we're kind of.
Yeah, my thought is is that potentially. We might get a motion before we do public comment, but I actually would be open to. To the commission's thought on that. This is a little, we've not really dug into something like this and quite, at least since I've been on the commission. Um so I would, I would also lean on some of you if you have a preference of what seems. Appropriate, because we will be taking public comments.
I personally think it's fine to do a motion first.
To do the motion first?
I think so. I mean, this isn't like a.
Okay, that's what.
This isn't like talking about ADU or something where it's like.
That was my inclination, but I think that we should have a discussion now. And if you have thoughts or. We can go ahead and do that.
We can deliberate after the public comment.
Yeah, yeah, we can also deliberate after that.
Yeah.
None.
Um, so I would say if you have. Inclinations, thoughts, questions, concerns, this would be a good, let's start there. So if you, I feel like you'd like to say something, Commissioner Lyons.
Inclinations, thoughts on the selection, on the process?
Do you have a process um preference?
No, and I actually appreciate uh Vice Chair Newt's suggestion that. You you know, if we have, if we talk about candidates. And then have a motion and then public comment, there's still room for deliberation after the public comment. Um so. That uh eases some of my concerns. And I guess I have the floor, so I'll just. Start with some thoughts. So I um appreciate the um. The city manager identifying that we've had kind of a lack of expertise on the development side in the past on the. Um at least I I'm aware of that on the the planning board. Um and so, and that was actually kind of one of the first ways I was. Evaluating the list that you gave us, like what, where, where do these folks come from in in terms of their. Areas of expertise. And so I, in you know, in pretty simple terms, um I've identified. Uh environmental and community advocacy, planning and development. And so the, these are separated by individual environmental and community advocacy, planning and development, healthcare. Real estate, education, business, and development. My sense is maybe we've. Gone a little far on compensating for lack of development knowledge on the board. Um, and I I realize that that is a. Like a really important skill set and and uh like a necessary thing for understanding for for the consolidated land use board. However, I also see that as maybe being like the the profession with the highest potential for conflict of interest. Um and that concern, that concerns me. Um, if if we had that representation once over, I'd be a little bit less concerned. But three out of seven with this kind of potential. For conflict of interest makes me a little uncomfortable. And it and it, to me, it's kind of an indication. I I it had, I I think I see it as a potential to um sway our policy in a in a certain way. Um and it it makes me uncomfortable. So I think I'll, I'll leave it at that and see how the the conversation develops. Um so I'll just open it with that concern.
Others?
Individual, at individual levels, I don't see any, I don't have any concerns, but I I do appreciate certainly what. Commissioner Lyons uh has opened my eyes to is that there is a slightly heavy leaning. Direction towards, say, real estate and development in that regard, that arena um. Uh, nothing in in particular to each person, but maybe. You know, put one out, plug another one in for some other arena of the city of Livingston, like um. Yeah, it's an unenviable task trying to put a group together like that. And so.
Yeah.
Uh thank you very much, Mr. Gager. How are you?
I'll go, if that's, all right, um. Thank you for the task of interviewing all these folks. Um. I I do sort of lean my fellow, my other fellow commissioners uh thoughts that maybe we're a little heavy on. Development on real estate sort of folks. Um, and I think what concerns me is that some of, some of the folks on here are working in that field too. Um whereas there were some other folks that maybe are retired or, you know, that. So I do have a little concern about that. Um, I, you know, looking at some of these folks, I do see like, well, maybe they they work over both men or, you know, so that there, maybe there's not. Quite that conflict, but I I also would just, I think personally, I feel like there might be that nagging. Well, what if they get a project over here or what if they're planning ahead for a project over here that we don't know about? And I mean, and I'm not. And quite frankly, I also don't want to make it seem like I'm expressing anyone's ill will or. Uh, you know, doing something unwieldy. Um but also just not even really, really realizing it. Um. So I do, I think for me, I have a little concern there, if that, if that makes sense. Um. But there was a re- a lot of really. I would, yes.
Yeah, i- if I may, um so I I asked a series of eight questions to each applicant. And and the the final question was in relation to um conflicts of interest. Sometimes they got asked out of order if. You know, we were just kind of going down that. Um and 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 I can say, you know, I was especially sensitive to that with folks that work in the profession. And uh and and so we we did talk at length, um those individuals and myself and. Um, you know, there is uh, there are two architects that that have been selected or recommended. Um and and at neither of them really works on the type of projects that we would see. Um one of them, you know, works for a, he's a captive in a land development company and and they have a piece of land that they are developing. And so. Um, you know, his, his profession really is limited to to one chunk of land. Um and then the the other uh gentleman. Um who who is an architect, um works on um actually uh. Firm operations, and so he's not involved in projects at this point in his career. Um he has the architecture background and the large-scale master plan experience. Uh but he, you know, personally is not actually on project teams anymore and and his firm um is contracted with. Uh several large employers, including hospital um companies and and universities within the state. And and so that is more where their. Book of Business uh trends towards. And so, um you know, I I felt comfortable that that certainly those. The the two architects in the group um really were very unlikely to do any work here in in the city of Livingston. Uh but possess that that background uh with within the industry. So hopefully that is um, that's a helpful perspective in in. My recommendation process.
Thank you. Yes, please.
Um, so in my experience, um, I feel like we've always had. Maybe not, you know, since Mr. Gager has been here, if he's not seen it, but since I've been on the commission, I feel like we've always had about disrepresentation. Of architects or engineers um or contractors. I'm thinking like, we had somebody that was, I think, he was the chair, vice chair of the planning board when the growth policy. When the city went out for RFPs and his firm actually submitted to do the growth policy and he was on the planning board at the time. That firm was not selected. However, um I believe somebody from that firm then went on to be on the zoning commission afterwards, if I remember correctly. So. I think there's always, there's been even more direct potential conflicts than this. Um I think we've always had architects. I mean, to be fair. You know. This is a small town and the five of us sometimes have conflicts. There's, you know, two people in the front of this room right now that have worked in construction, right? Do or have. And so um, just recognizing that we all wear lots of hats. Um. We all wear lots of hats at some point in our, in our time, you know, with local government. So I. I guess I don't know how, I don't, I don't know that it's ever possible that there would be like. The perfect world where there would be. Somebody with all the experience and knowledge and zero potential for conflict. Like, I don't know that that exists. So I. Sort of lean into trusting the process and when it comes up, that there's a potential conflict like that people will, you know. We can have those conversations like the, and by we, I mean the city staff. Or or the city attorney, right, can work with those people to figure out what the conflict is and the best way for those people with a potential conflict to move forward. Um ethically representing the city transparently. Um or just recusing themselves if there is a conflict, because that has happened, but it usually doesn't make it so there's not a quorum. Like in my experience, it's only one or two people that have had to.
Yeah.
Out of a body of sevens in the last several years.
Exactly, yeah.
So I'm not as worried about.
I'm I'm not either, yeah. Um it's, we've had this makeup before, you know, it's. Um.
And.
Yeah.
You know, and I like the balance with the other people that it brings, like thinking about some of the experiences, some of the other people that are in different parts of the community. And the perspective that they bring feels like maybe it balances those.
Exactly, it balances out. It just, it, the expertise, you know, of an architect or or two on there. And somebody with, you know. Background in real estate as well, you know, just. Well-rounded. I I think you've done a good job of finding that balance. Um although I understand where Tori's coming from, absolutely.
Do I still have the floor?
Yes, sorry.
Um I, but I do want to say, you know, Commissioner Lyons, I really do appreciate it. And I think it's something that's like always good to be really mindful of when we're. Making decisions, particularly about potentially litigious. Is that the word litigious, which? I think in Montana land use decisions or maybe anywhere tend to be the, the the hottest. Um, the hottest thing, the hottest item to sue over. And so I think it's, thank you for. I think if we walk into it eyes wide open, that's also very helpful for us as a city, thinking about the risk to any decision. I yield.
Thank you, ma'am. Others? Further, just further comments?
Good.
Uh, I'll I'll make a finer point.
Yep.
On it, um. I appreciate the explanation and the the due diligence on kind of. Uh anticipating uh maybe this comment from from the commission. Um. And. With that said, um. Like given the. The diversity and 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 um level of applicants that we've gotten. Um, I I I I'd see some, just kind of overlap in expertise in the selection here and um. And you know, I think. Barring land use law and maybe um. Urban planning, there isn't anything as closely related to land use decisions as as. An architecture education might be. But that said, um. I don't know, I'm given the potential for conflict or the potential for the appearance of conflict. Um and the the overlapping expertise, I might um suggest replacing one of. The folks with that redundant uh expertise with someone with a different background.
Anyone else?
I mean, if I feel like we're moving into deliberation and we're talking about the selection. So I'm guess I'm curious, you know, Chair Kale, is that where we're at? Do you want us? Because I have thoughts on that, but I didn't think we were going to do that till after public comment.
Yeah, so let's, I have one more question that I want to ask, but it's gonna come up throughout this. And then I. I would suggest potentially. Consider or entertain a motion and then go to public comment and then deliberate after that. If folks are feeling like that's kind of where we're at. Okay, is that where you're feeling? So that's.
I mean, I guess it depends how you want the process to go. If there's a, you know, if we're talking about who's on the committee. Do you want to do that after or before a public comment? Cause it would just mean, I mean, it's your call.
Well, if we make a comment, just just to talk this out with all of you, if we make a motion now, we are going to begin with on the committee. Now, get a public comment and then we can make amendments to that if that's. The way we would like to move forward.
Well, good day.
Does that work? Okay. Let me ask this question. Um. I I am a little, I am actually more concerned about the realtor, like and what that. Conflict of interest might look like, because almost to me, after you, you you know, Mr. Gager, after you explained to us, sort of. The architects in the, that are on the list and then they sort of work outside of the area and. Um, to me, it looks like potentially our realtor does work in Livingston. And and that seems like there could be more conflict there. Um. For a lot of different, particularly subdivisions and and other things. So I'm curious to know what your take on that, that is.
Uh, you know, it's a, it's an absolutely fair question. Um, you know, it's, it is my understanding that. Um the the realtor that has been uh recommended um does not do development work within the city of Livingston. And and is is really just managing listings. Um and so, y- you know, I I would offer that um subdivisions when they are approved typically. Um the development team has a real estate partner um that they use for the sales aspect of of the project. And so. Um you know, I think to the extent that that individual was not the the sales partner on a development, that that would not pose any conflict of interest. Um certainly, if if they were that sales partner, I think there would be a a disclosure required in there. Um, but you know, I I will also point out that uh we currently have a a realtor on the zoning commission. And and I I think there is value to that market knowledge um and and understanding um what. Uh where the market is and and as far as both supply and demand. And so that really was the kind of the the genesis of of my. Uh recommendation for that individual.
Thank you.
I think we have on the planning board too.
Yeah.
Another.
Yeah, and that that's why specifically brought that up. I mean, I mean, it. Looks bad kind of, but it's really not. You need some of that expertise and especially. I I knowing where she's at in the real estate business does not make that uncomfortable.
Yeah, and I I would, that that specific candidate actually early in her career um worked for a large. Um developer residential housing um in the Calgary area. And uh it's, it is now a a worldwide company. Um and and so I I I I found that experience to be very helpful um from somebody who has actually been on a project team that helped move. Development, residential development applications forward. And and so that, a little bit of background, it may not have come through on the application as long as it could have.
Thank you. I think that's all important information for everyone to hear.
No, yeah.
All right.
Are you looking for a motion?
Shall we entertain a motion?
I can do this. When I move to appoint Jonathan Peddinger, I apologize in advance for any name mispronunciations. John Kalman and Jesse Wilcox to the Consolidated Land Use Board for one-year terms and Caitlin Schiller, Bailey Goodwine, Forrest. Yusman and Frank O'Connor to the Consolidated Land Use Board for two-year terms.
I'll check it.
Okay, motion by Newt and a second by Schwartz. We will now open this up to public. We will now open this up to public comments. So let's go ahead and ask for a comment in the room. Anyone in the room, feel free to come up to the podium. All right, seeing no public comment in the room, we'll go online. Anyone online have public comments about the appointment to the Consolidated Land Use Board? Um. Raise your hands, come off mute. One more time. Any public comment? One last time in the room, anyone? All right, public comment is closed.
I promise you don't seem scary.
I know, am I like that? Am I scare people away?
It was a long guess.
Yeah, and it's cold. Um, okay, so that brings us to deliberation.
I'll go first, um, I'll. Um. Say that I. I'm happy to hear what Tori had to say and you as well. You know, and, uh, it's good to have that discussion out in public and stuff like that, that we do. See, you guys do see and recognize, you know, where there might be potentials, conflicts, but, um. With that being said, and with Mr. Gager's recommendations and his explanations on why I'm comfortable with the. With the slate of, um, candidates. That I yield.
Commissioner Willis, go ahead.
Uh, I trust that, uh, Mr. Gager has done his, uh. The tough job of talking to everybody and putting together the best list possible for us. That's how I feel about this, this group. So, thank you.
Sure.
Uh. My discomfort remains. Um, not for distrust of the process or distrust of any individuals. Um. But I. You know. Having. Close to half of the, the board made up of folks who. At least indirectly benefit from. Increasing supply by facilitating development. Um, is an uncomfortable. Um. Way to make policy to me. I, I don't. It, you know, like we. We, we have the chance right now, I mean, we, we have the power to determine who's going to be making those rec. And, and, you know. I'm going to moderate my language a little bit. It's the commission that will ultimately make these decisions. Um, but these are folks that are making recommendations to us and I personally. Put a lot of stock in those recommendations because I, I appreciate the, the. The amount of time, consideration and expertise that goes into that process. And so I, I think that we should be super careful in the way that we're crafting, um, the makeup of these boards. Um, and I, and I continue to be uncomfortable with the, really just the proportion of, of that makeup. Um, kind of all having an indirect, um. An indirect potential to benefit from specific set of policies. So, um. I, my feeling is that we should, um, at least take out one, one of those three. Um, and replace them with someone else who has, um, a different area of expertise.
Different recommendation?
Um, I, I hate to do this. Uh, but I, I'm the one whose voice and is concerned. I think that, um. Think that one of the architects could go because we have two architects with kind of similar areas of expertise. Um. And, uh. One of the things that I'm thinking about. Is. That we're losing a lot of institutional knowledge and awareness of, um. What went into the growth policy? You know, if you asked me to join a board. Next week and said, you know, get, get up to date on the growth policy. It'd take me a really, really long time, um, to get up to date on the growth policy and it would take me even longer. To get to the level where folks who were part of that process, um. Uh, are today. So maybe my recommendation would be someone who, from the existing planning board or the. Former planning board. Um. And I think. We had two, two applicants. Um, from the former planning boards. Um, and so either of those would. Um, be fine for me. So I guess, yeah, I would suggest removing one of the architects and replacing them, um, maybe with someone. From the original plan board.
Okay.
My turn?
Yes, please.
Well, I lean in a different direction. I, um. I like this makeup. Of who's on here. Um. I look at these names and I, in particular, we can even. We can, um. Narrow it down even to the, the three people with potential conference conflicts that we're talking about. I've. Those people have all engaged with local government. Not necessarily around land use law, at least since I've been a commissioner and even just in the last year. Um. One has come to a meeting and testified. The other two I saw in context, I, I recognize that like not everybody, this isn't the easiest time of day for everybody to engage with the five of us, but. I've saw and had detailed conversations in depth with two of them about. Things that they initiated that weren't land use law. So they're paying attention to other things that are happening in the city, which is a huge plus to me. Um. I also. There's another name on here. I'm trying to walk the line. Chair Kail, not talking about people, but also talking about qualifications. So there is somebody on here that has. Was on the planning board before I was on the planning board. So they have more institutional knowledge potentially. Going back further than any of the, well, maybe. Quentin wasn't on the planning board. I mean, excuse me, Commissioner Schwartz wasn't on the planning board, but perhaps they. That person, this person goes back as far as Commissioner Schwartz probably.
Yeah.
Um, so I do think we have some institutional knowledge and I don't think we're losing it. Um. And. And I think. You know, it's a good balance and everybody, everybody. Here has been engaging with the city in a various, in a variety of ways, on a variety of topics. And they all sort of have a different view of the community as I can see it, like whether it's. Nonprofit, hospital, school, um, small business owner. Medium-sized business owner, right? Like I think there's, like, it just feels like as good of a makeup as it can be, given the impossible task of choosing. Among. A bunch of very qualified people. I think this feels like a good balance. Also the terms, some of them are short terms. There, I mean, the longest term is two years. So. This commissioner, we're going to be here together, guys, for at least two years, right? Um.
Two more years.
So the five of us, so we can adjust if it's not working and also the commission, like Commissioner Lyons said, the commission has a final say. So if we feel that there's a big conflict or, um. You know, that the recommendation coming before us feels biased, as sometimes it does, right? Like it's still our job to try to balance out. Yep, so, so I'm comfortable with this. I'm comfortable with this selection. Personally. I yield.
I think the one thing to, that I'm trying to keep in my mind as we're looking at this list too, is that. We're combining these two boards too. So it's, it's planning and then the zoning and so. So for me, it seems like we need to have sort of that broad. Knowledge around more things in this one board than we had previously on the two, if that makes sense. Um. This is a hard one for me too, because I do have the same discomfort. Commissioner Lyons, that I think you do. Um. But we do have the final say. And my, so. My backup right now too is that you're on that board and that. I feel like you will come to us and tell us. Give us the rundown, right? What happened at the meeting? What, you know, how, how things sort of shook out and where people were at. Um.
Can I add something?
Yes, please go ahead.
The other thing we have, um. That we didn't always have as a commission, just, I'm just. Hard to say, might be hard to hear, but it's also true. We now have staff that go to the board meetings, which we didn't always have. Right? So we have. We're actually staffed up in a way that we weren't when I first got on the commission. There's director positions that did not used to exist in the city of Livingston that now exist. So we, um, we have staff that go to the meetings. And also, I think for most of the big stuff, Mr. Gager goes to the meetings in addition to his staff. So we usually have at least two, sometimes three. Maybe more staff that go to the meetings in addition to, um. And when I first came on the commission, we didn't even have a city attorney that came to meetings. So we have like a lot more support as a commission. From the executive branch than we've ever had. If we're concerned about conflicts, those are things that we should be able to go to Mr. Gager with to have evaluated. Right? And he's got staff also going to these meetings. So I would, I trust that. I trust that if those staff are seeing things or have concerns that, you know, they're also public servants, that they would take that to him and. That's something that we would have addressed, um. You know, I also expect, I guess, that maybe. This isn't the most contentious land use place that Mr. Gager has worked and perhaps it's been even more, um. Contentious in other places where he's done, where he's done contract work, where worked as a city administrator. So maybe. He has input on how he would manage that if there was a conflict. Like how he would guide us or the board. I would be curious to hear that information if it's appropriate, Chair Kail. Mr. Gager?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Montana Code annotated, um, and, uh, and, and others, including the Winston Municipal Code are very clear on. On how to handle conflicts that, that may arise. So I, I do have every confidence that. Um, that I have recommended a board that will have very few conflicts because. Quite honestly, I recognize and, and I made this clear to all of the applicants in the interview process. There is a lot of work ahead of this board in the coming twelve to eighteen months. Um, between the review of, of the zoning, um, provisions of the municipal code. Any applications that may come in through the existing subdivision process and also the new planning unit development process. Uh, review of subdivision regulations, um, starting to do work on gateway overlay zones. Um, and, and then we saw there were some recommendations in the recent Great West Engineering Report related to, uh, the floodplain. And, uh, and development in the floodplain, which I, I think would very naturally, uh, come before this board as we develop. Uh, or work to improve some of those regulations. So I, I really have tried to recommend. A board that will have minimal conflicts, recognizing just really how detrimental. The conflicts can be and the removal of a voice from the conversation. And so, um, I, I think we have. Recommended a board that will have minimal conflicts, but, uh, I, yes, will work with the city attorney and the planning staff to. Uh, identify and mitigate any conflicts that may arise.
I mean, I think that's helpful and I just. We didn't always have staff quarrel. That could come to meetings. We were lucky sometimes if we could get any one, let alone, I mean, any one. So I just feel like. The, I just, I don't know. I, it just feels really different to me, like knowing that there's going to be. At least a couple of staff people here in addition to.
I think it's a hard, I think it's a hard decision because there was some very, there was a lot of good candidates and. I thank you for going through that, but I think that that's what makes it. A little hard for me too. There were some other, there were some good candidates in there that have some, some other different experience too. And so I think that that. That's hard. I know we have one renter on here. Is there more than one? Do we know?
So there is, um, one person who, who rents. There is another person who is a non-owner occupant of, of their house. So.
Anything else? Any other thoughts?
No.
Okay. Are you ready for a vote?
Hmm, I am.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We'll call.
Chair Kail.
Four.
Please, Chair Gitz.
Four.
Mr. Schwartz.
Four.
Commissioner Lyons.
Or. Commissioner Williams.
Motion passes. Thank you for the hard discussion. Um, and thank you, Mr. Gager, for your hard work on this. I, I would just say that that was a very hard decision. Because there were so many, there were a lot of good applicants too. So thank you for everyone who applied. The city and this commission really appreciate it. And we would hope that you would. Maybe try again on another board. If something opens up, we'd like to see your name again. So, and please participate in meetings and come to these meetings as well. So thank you for. For everyone that did that.
Chair Kail.
Yes.
There will be three openings in a year.
Yes.
Say that as well.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question as well?
Absolutely.
Process-wise, um. There's going to be a training for all these people, right? That's mandatory. Is that right?
That is correct, um, the afternoon of Monday, February fifth.
And so, Mr. Gager, I might say too that. This commission is invited to, um, participate in that. Training as well. So we'll make sure that Mr. Gager gets that information out to everybody if.
Um, it is scheduled from noon to five, yeah.
On February the fifth?
Monday, February fifth. And all of the, um. Uh, appointees are, uh, available that day and it is on their calendar. And, and if I may, I, I would also, uh. Thank the community members, everyone that, that applied and I will point out that we do have an opening on the Historic Preservation. Board that will be advertised in the coming days.
Thank you. It is seven o'clock. Um, so. Would we all like to take a break?
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Can I get a motion?
I moved that we take a five-minute break. What's your one ten?
I prefer ten.
Looking at you. Oh, I was, you're raising your eyes like, I want ten.
I know. I'm waiting like, are you looking for a second?
Yeah, I'll do it then.
Yeah. One second.
Okay, so we have a motion for a break from Schwartz and a second. By Newt, all in favor? Motion passes. Uh, it's seven o'clock. We will be back at seven-ten. Thank you very much. All right, well, I will bring us back to order, um, at seven-thirteen. And we can continue on our agenda. Action item D. Mission Direction Regarding State Mandated Changes to Zoning. Mr. Gager.
Uh, thank you, Chair Kail. The item for you is, um, really, uh, I, I am seeking direction on how the commission would like to proceed. You may recall in our last meeting, we performed a first reading of ordinance three-zero-four-six. Which, um. The goal of which was to, uh, uh, several state mandated changes that came through, um, the, the state legislature this year. Uh, however, the, the day after our last meeting, um, there was an injunction put in place by the Eighteenth Judicial District in Gallatin County. That, um, stayed the implementation of Senate Bills three-two-three and five-two-eight. And because we were in the process of, uh, adopting an ordinance that codified the requirements of those bills. Um, we now have the, the ability to assess if we would like to. Move forward with the implementation of those bills. Um, before the, before the injunction is, is lifted or settled. And so, uh, the item really before you. Is, uh, I would welcome your, uh, collective direction on whether you would like to proceed. With, uh, continuing the second readings of ordinance three-zero-four-six at the next meeting as originally scheduled. Or if we would like to, uh, modify that three-zero-four-six to only incorporate the changes. Uh, mandated by SB two-four-five. Mandated by SB two four five with, just to be specific, Senate Bill two forty five is the bill that. Allowed multi-unit five or more residential structures to be. Built as a right in commercial districts within the city. And so this primarily affects our neighborhood commercial. Which currently only allows. One apartment to be constructed in a commercial building if it is tied to the owner. And. I I will remind you in the in the last meeting, not only did we, did the commission. Incorporate the requirements of SB two four five, they actually also expanded upon. The the allowed residential within the neighborhood commercial to allow any number of units in a in a commercial building. And so. I will stand for any questions you may have, and I appreciate any direction you may desire to give.
Thank you. Miss Nards, Mr. Lyons.
Mr. Gager. What? Would you give? Some boundaries. On time of how you. Expect from the quickest it will be resolved. That stay. To the longest it will take to be resolved. To the degree that you are capable of defining those boundaries. Where would you set them?
I would offer from my experience that I would expect the. The injunction to sit for no less than six months on on an issue like this. But I I would expect it to be resolved certainly within twelve months.
Thank you.
I I, if I may, this isn't the question you asked, but having watched this. Process play out in other states. It is my expectation that. That the state legislatures right to mandate certain aspects of municipal zoning will be upheld. I've seen it upheld in in other states. Those are other states, but legislatures generally have the same power. And so I I do not necessarily expect the lawsuit to be successful. So I I would expect that we may be addressing the requirements of SB three two three and five two eight at a future date.
You still have a floor?
I don't have any more questions, but I'm happy to make a. Follow on. Comment. Given that context, which which is. Mostly what I expected to hear. You know, I think that we've done. We've done the. The work of assessing. How that might affect. Our community. I mean, we've done half the work. We've got another public hearing on it, but. And I also, I I think I would maybe feel differently. If those changes felt like they were. Wildly out of step of our vision for growth in in Livingston. But I don't think that they are. And so I think it would be. It might be. Delaying the inevitable to. To put it off and then just start that conversation over again. If and when. That's resolved. So. I'm not inclined to suggest that we. Post on making the changes that we just that we have started deciding on.
Well, there's.
I, that's exactly what I was thinking as well. Put a lot of work into it and we spent a lot of time on it. And. Yeah, I I I. I totally agree. Commissioner Lyons. Assessment of this. And it looks like it's probably going to be a foregone conclusion anyway, so. I see no reason to delay and start over again in six months, six to twelve months. Thank you, I yield.
Others?
Yeah, I think we've had. Good conversations, particularly. Around. You know, some points that Commissioner Lyons brought up. In regards to restricting occupancy. I would like to see that definitely move forward to be. What's the word? More permissive and who can live in places in Livingston? I would. I feel a little bit differently about. Let's see, the. Have to look up in a verse. So three twenty three is.
The duplex.
The. Duplexes, which we already addressed previously and. I believe. Our own.
Code.
And then the other. Part is five twenty eight. The concern I have there is. I believe it's not listed here, but I believe that gets. Waving impact fees. Is that correct, Mr. Gager?
Yes, that's included in the last sentence of.
Thank you. Thank you. My. Prescription just changed and I. I'm feeling it and waiting for my new ones. So I sometimes. Things are not jumping off the page of me. And so the main reason is not because our conversation wasn't robust, but because. If one thing's been made clear to me by the people in Livingston, it's that they would like development to pay its own way. And so I think if we get another year of development paying its own way rather than current taxpayers footing the bill for future development. You know. I think that that's important and valid, like Commissioner Willits brought up. What I did agree with him on was. We have existing neighborhoods that do need. Infrastructure attention. And also, the way we pay for that is through impact fees. Of new development like ADU. So if, for example, in. The neighborhood that you were referencing, more eighty s are going in, but those impact fees are waived, then. Those impact fees will not be paying for infrastructure improvements needed in that same neighborhood. Rather, it would be the. Previous. You know, generation or the the previous. Landowners, property owners that would be paying for it that didn't necessarily benefit from that ADU. And so. I would feel comfortable with moving part of it forward, but some of it. I would rather let it play out, not necessarily have to redo the conversation, but maybe put in a pause on the conversation until we were forced to do part two. For those two bills, but. The part that Commissioner Lyons brought up, I would feel comfortable moving forward with the. Increasing housing. What's the word? Accessibility, like. Making it a bit more equitable for who could live. In available housing. Yeah, I think so.
Mr. Willis, before me.
Yeah, this could be just a. Process question that we've. Ordinance thirty forty six covers all three of the bills, and we've discussed them. To completion, I think, other than the second part of it, which is the next part. Can we split thirty forty six into like two parts, like an Alphon Bravo, so we can handle the one part that we can work on? Ahead of time and then, or I guess in due time, but then these other two, three twenty three and five twenty eight. I I'd like to see what the court does with it before we jump into it, write, write it all out, and then we do have to make changes. And then start the process over again. So if we could. Just move the one part that I think we settled on. That isn't affected by the current. Court cases, then. At least that's one third of what we can be keep moving forward.
I believe that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, and and that that really was my intention. If it's not the commission's desire to move forward with changes that are not mandated by the state. Then we would bring back a revised ordinance three zero four six that only enacts the provisions of SB two four five. And then also includes those changes that were discussed and decided by the commission and would remove the other changes from the ordinance if that's the goal of the commission.
Yep, thank you.
I I lean towards what Commissioner Lyons and Commissioner Schwartz said. We kind of, we really did have a pretty exhaustive conversation about. All of this. And I think that we. Granted, we were getting pushed into some of these directions because of the state. Mandates. My my thought is, I wonder. Because at the moment, like five two eight hasn't particularly five two eight hasn't is is on hold. I'm wondering, I went back and looked at the Housing Action Plan. And one of. One of the points of the Housing Action Plan. Was to incentivize incentivize ADUs. And one of those was was to use incentives for ADUs. By by, you know, if if folks decided to deed restrict or do a long term rental, you would give them some sort of an incentive for doing the ADO. And I wonder. If there might be a way that we would move forward with what we have. But because we have the ability now, because we don't have to follow exactly what the state says. Is to incentivize ADUs by saying if you'll do a deed restricted or. Long term rental deed restricted for affordability. That you would get the the incentive. Of exemption of impact fees, but if not, then you have to get into impact fees. Because we also talked about parking in here, which. I mean, I think. For a lot of us, the. You know, not requiring a parking space for an ADU. You know, I think for some, I I think for some of us on this. Commission, that's not. We wouldn't move forward with that. But just a thought, it gives us a little more flexibility. We've talked about this sort of excessively anyway, but. Could we change it to make it a little better? Be my thought. Ms. Schwartz.
I frankly love that idea. And. At first, I was like, why didn't we think of that before? But it's because that wasn't possible before. But what that does. To it, to a certain degree, it addresses Vice Chair Noots's concerns of like leaving money on the table for no reason. That we need for for paying for infrastructure. But at the same time, incentivizing. A a function of this additional housing that we greatly need. Which is for affordable housing and long term rental. And that's us putting a policy marker in the ground, saying this is really, this is what we're incentivizing. Another thing that I really like about it is it's kind of like a natural experiment. If in twelve months, we can't do this anymore. We can see if there has been any impact of providing any kind of incentive incentive finance, like substant, you know, substantial financial incentive. For affordable housing and long term rentals. So. I just think that that's a fabulous idea. And it seems like a win win to me, and I support it wholeheartedly. I think it's written great.
Clarify question. I don't mean to put you on the spot. Did you have any idea off the top of your head what how much the impact fee is? But on an ADU?
Yes, we have had some conversations internally and we expect it's about ten thousand dollars.
Okay, I just wanted to see what kind of money we're talking about.
And if if I may not interject myself into the conversation, but you know, I I would offer that. The planning unit development ordinance that you folks enacted several months ago does actually include a provision for the waiving of impact fees for units that are. Deed restricted at sixty percent affordable.
That's right.
And so I just offer that as, you know, food for thought.
Thank you.
Yes, my main concern right now, I'm open to the conversation, but my main concern is that this wasn't noticed on the agenda to talk about. Accessory dwelling units being tied to a deed restriction. And so I'm concerned if we move forward with a conversation or a decision on this. That we're violating process. And so I would be interested if this is something that we need to bring back since it seems like a significant pivot from what's in front of us.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, I I would offer, we're here, I I've asked for commission direction. There's no decision that's going to be made tonight. Nothing will be approved or rejected. So. I'm happy to, I believe with legal counsel online, but I'm I'm happy to bring the discussion back. In a more formal way at the next meeting. I had intended to do so with an ordinance of some form.
Can I ask?
Yes, you do.
I would be interested to know. So hypothetically, we're talking about a one year. Change if in fact the. We have to adopt this code anyway, the state code. And so I'm interested in knowing. You know, if. We're deed restricting things. As part of with ADU specifically in this context, and then in one year. It could all be negated and the deed restrictions go away and we just.
It will be negated.
We've basically. We basically just reduce our impact fees to zero with no benefit because realistically, units are not going to be built in a year. And so. I mean, maybe think maybe ADUs will be built in a year, but. I'm watching ADUs be built in my neighborhood and it takes longer than a year. And so, at least from what I'm seeing, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, no, no, I agree, but yeah, I think it.
So then.
It starts at at the permitting process. That's your window, so.
But then like if then the.
But then it's going to revert back anyway, so. So deed restriction would be a moot point.
Yes, you know.
Um, I agree. So my point is that we've waived a bunch of impact fees for a year. The lawsuit is no good. We have to adopt state code anyway. And now there's the deed restrictions are. Invalid. And would just waived impact fees for years. So I think it's a conversation worth having, but I guess if. There's information on that from a policy perspective, that would be useful in decision making. Because from the research I've done around ADUs, it can take, you know, more like five to ten years to see the impacts of. Deed restricting land. Specifically with ADUs, it takes a little bit longer to see the impact of a policy decision. So I'm concerned that we'll basically be just. Giving away. Impact fees for a year with no meaningful policy. What is the word I'm looking for? Impacts, policy impacts, yeah.
Yield. I wonder. I think that that. Is good. Good. Thank you for that. And it makes me also think that. This is my idea of it now with you saying that. It also makes me think we force people into. These regulations with deed restriction. And then in a year, the state says, well, no, you can, you could have had that impact. That impact we. Taken, you know, you would have been exempt, and but now you're stuck in this. Not stuck, but. So maybe it's maybe it's something that we need to consider. When we know all the information, meaning when. The court. The court case is decided. I think it's something to think about. Commissioner Schwartz.
Madam Chair. If I was. Well, ADUs aren't so much development, but if I was to do one and knowing what's on the. Horizon, I would delay. My building. So I didn't have to. Pay the impact fee, so. I'm just. Throwing that out there for what it's worth, but I'm I'm. I'm so. Much in favor of having development pay its way to help pay for the infrastructure. I think it's a big mistake on the state's part. For bringing this, but our hands are tied, so. Unless by some miracle, though. You know, the state hurts, but. We'll see. Time will tell, but. I yield.
Mr. Schwartz.
Yeah. I appreciate the city manager's experience with. Previous lawsuits in some states here as well. And I generally tend to agree. However, looking at what we have currently, it's a consortium of. Groups across the state that are making the lawsuit. It's not a neighborhood or a homeowners association or. Or a company or one thing. It's multiple groups in multiple cities, which gives me pause that. We're doing work that could be turned around. Pretty quick. pretty quickly. Minus the work that we've already done that we, we, we can do just fine, like the, which is a two forty-five, um. Yeah, I mean, I, I'd like to push two forty-five through our, our five-unit commercial, neighborhood commercial off, project, but these other two, I just want to see what the state, the state has to say first. I want to see it go through the court and if we need to spread, split it into three ordinances in order to be able to do each one individually. Maybe that's a, a way to handle it, I'm sure.
Mr. Lyons?
I, uh, am, am very sympathetic to and, um, on principle, agree very strongly with, uh, Vice Chair Newt's assertion that we should uh, ensure that development is paying its fair share of its impact on um, city services, uh, infrastructure included. And and I also like really enjoy, or am excited by your idea, um, to make this po- this policy signal. And I, you know, being a social scientist, like a potential natural experiment to see how effective these, um, these incentives are. I, I would I, I would suggest that a deed restriction doesn't necessarily get erased with a policy change. A deed restriction is associated to the deed of that, of that property. Would, would folks maybe be frustrated that they restricted the potential uses of a, of a unit? Um, and then find out year, a year or so later that, that if they had waited a year, they might not have to do that, quite possibly. Um, but also if you're considering that kind of use for your property, you might just have a, um, you know, a values reason to be making that decision and you might not be super frustrated about that. I don't know. I, 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 I think it's a very interesting idea and I'm, and I am in favor of it. And generally, I am in favor of development, uh, paying for its impacts on our community. So sympathetic to those, those arguments and very much appreciate Chair Kale's, uh, idea, um, for that potential, like trying out of a policy.
So can I ask a question? So are we? It seems like what we're really talking about at this point is deed restricting A D Us for impact fees, not dissimilar to the P U D conversation.
Yeah.
Is that what you're?
I think so, yeah.
I guess I would be interested in the information from staff. If it's possible. I mean, this is something that definitely the state was dancing around all session. Which begins, we're leaning into another conversation that's going to come forward from the public with this. And so I just want to, um, be aware that this is a very time-consuming policy question potentially. And if we're counting numbers for impacts of housing, A D Us is relatively small compared to like P U Ds, which we already did. So, um, if we do bring this back, I think that's important context to consider that, because we're doing this huge zoning overhaul and some of the zoning code that we're going to be doing potentially has more immediate or bigger impact number-wise than A D Us. So I just want to make sure that we're we're not moving one thing forward at the expense of something else that we've been talking about. Does that make sense? Like the like, like, like A D Us, i- if it takes up all this space in a meeting, then, um, we might, it might prohibit us from moving other things forward that are, that are, you know, bigger in terms of, um, from like the growth policy priority perspective. So that's just kind of, this is this is going to open up, I'm just going to say it, short-term rental conversation is going to be what's on the heels of A D Us. If we're talking about deed restricting, that's those are the people I would expect to come forward to talk at meetings. So I just want to be eyes wide open if this is the conversation we're going to have.
Well, and this could be something that, that could be considered within the zoning overhaul to begin with. So maybe it's just an idea that's planted, a seed that's planted as we move forward. You know, and to see where that goes. But I will say, just to kind of check us a little bit here. Mr. Gauger is looking for some direction from us about what we want to do. Yeah, what we want to do with this ordinance. Um, we have to do something with two forty-five. We don't really have
Well, we're not a point to make a motion on it, right?
No, no, we're just giving him some directions because
Just to bring back
What's he, what is he going to bring back to us?
Thirty forty-six with just S B two forty-five.
Is that what, is that what we're saying? Yeah, we're calling that. So that, that's what Mr. Gauger is asking.
That's what he's asking.
What, what, for with, with this ordinance?
Right.
What, what would you like to see come back next, next meeting is potentially when this would come back, so.
S B two forty-five as, um, a change is made to that.
Okay, so that's what
That, that's what I'm looking at, then three twenty-three and five twenty-eight, they are what they are. Meanwhile, we can stay within our current zoning. Distress is with, if that fees as they are. Yeah, taking three forty-six and just attaching S B two forty-five to it. And the other two can be a separate ordinance down the road.
So I'm, I'm going to ask for Mr. Gauger and I will come to each of you to ask to, to get this information, but, uh, Commissioner Schwartz, bring back the section about two forty-five and the way in which we discussed it last time. Is that, that's what you're saying, right? Okay, cool. I just wanted to
Just to finalize that.
I want clarity around that, to put the, sure, seem clear to me. Mr. Willis?
That's exactly what I wanted to see, thirty forty-six with two forty-five in it.
Mr. Lyons?
Um, I would like to see the ordinance as we crafted it in our last meeting or in the last time it came before us with the change of, um, waiving of impact fees. Or, uh, affordable context. As uh, as the chair described it.
So we did put that in, or you're adding that?
Well, actually, I don't know if that was the intention of the chair. Um, because there's, there's a, there's a couple of elements there. But, and so I actually think I'm an outlier position that I just shared with you, that, um, because you, you made the point of, you brought up the idea of the impact fees. And what we might be able, how we might be able to, um, modify them based on some affordable housing outcomes. But I don't think that was, um, that was related to S B five twenty-eight.
Yeah.
I, I think, in maybe alone, in also being, still being in favor of the changes that respond to S B three twenty-three as well. Um, so my, my vote would be for all, all, the original, the original, um, ordinance with the exception of the impact fee modification.
Um, I would like to see the less restrictive, um, habitation requirement that Commissioner Lyons brought up, where it doesn't have to be required to be the business owner.
Well, that's two forty-five.
But nobody said it out loud yet. And so I just want to say it all. That was a change that we
Yeah, with the changes that we made.
I keep wondering if there's a way we can distinguish between neighborhood commercial more explicitly than make, from mixed uses. Mixed-use zoning, you know, um, Commissioner Lyons was really bringing up at the last meeting. I believe getting at like the differences between neighborhood commercial and the amount of commercial versus like mixed use. And I wish there was a way we could distinguish that more. I don't know if it's possible with two forty-five. It might not be, like requiring a certain percentage of commercial in relationship to the percentage of square footage of residential, does is that clear? I don't know. I don't know if we've explicitly said that tonight, but I think we were hinting at it at the last meeting. If you need me to expand, I can, Chair Kale, but maybe it's clear.
I, I, I'm clear what you meant there.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, just to distinguish between our zones, otherwise our zones become meaningless when they're basically
It's all muddy, yeah.
When they're all basically the same.
Same damn thing, yeah.
Yeah, if there's a way to like make this a little bit more distinctly commercial than just mixed use, that would be lovely. Um, also, I think I've made more points clear on S B three twenty-three and five twenty-eight regarding impact fees. I'm not particularly interested in waiving them. And I'm curious, like if we do waive them for deed restriction, like for deed restricted land, like P U Ds, like um, how meaningful is it from a legal perspective? Like if the law goes into effect, does it mean that the deed restricting, deed restriction goes away? Cause that would be my concern, is that it nullifies the deed restriction. That would be important information, I think.
I will agree with my fellow commissioners that I would like to see ordinance three, thirty forty-six with the parts about S B two forty-five and as discussed at the previous meeting. While I did bring up the idea about the, um, deed restriction and I still like it, it does give me a little pause about if we did it for the amount of time between now and the the resolution of the lawsuit. And then will we have people complaining that we bait and switched or something of that nature? So for me, the other two, the, the sections about three twenty-three and five twenty-eight could be left off. Although I still would like to plant the seed for deed restrictions um, for A D Us, if that lawsuit um, goes forward. And I'd like to see what that might look like in some of our zoning code changes. So I will leave that there. Does that give you enough from us?
It sure does.
Thank you.
Uh, all right, well, that brings us to, we are going to go into a closed session. Uh, so we will go into a closed session, pursue it to N C A two, three, two oh three, three, and four B to discuss matters of both personal privacy and a litigation strategy. So we're going to close the meeting. Uh, we will come back when that session is over. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. We will come back when the, when we will come out of closed session, back to the meeting. The meeting will open back up. So if you're online, you can stay. Um, we'll put you in a waiting room and come back. Um, if you're here, you'll have to leave the room, but you could come back in after. I do need to make a motion, uh, so I will make a motion to go into a closed session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Schwartz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. I'll see you all back here after a while. Okay, so we are back in open session, this Livingston City Commission meeting, and we'll move on down the agenda. Um, and so next on the agenda is city manager comments, Mr. Gauger.
I would like to thank the commission for your time tonight, and I would also like to thank all applicants for the consolidated land use board. And, and remind everyone that wasn't selected, we do have a vacancy on historic preservation committee. Um, and, and then I'd also like to thank Commissioner Lyons for whatever he did last week that produced all of the snow and winter.
Thank you.
Wow, I didn't know he had that kind of power. It's incredible.
He did a good dance, apparently.
The, the conspiracy.
All right, we'll do, uh, commissioner comments. Mr. Willis, you're up.
Um, I'll make it short, uh, thanks for a great meeting.
Mr. Lyons?
Shorter, ditto.
I agree.
I can't think of anything that was shorter. Um, I, yeah, I want to thank all the people that applied to the land use board. I, it's exciting to see, um, coming full circle. Just like, you know, on this, my time on the commission, seeing not enough applicants, not enough people to fill our boards, to having twice as many applicants as we have seats is really amazing. And I hope that these folks will keep coming to meetings and keep showing up and apply for other, further boards and stay engaged. Thanks.
All right. Um, I just have to thank my fellow commissioners for having good, hard conversations, um, and I look forward to the rest of my work throughout this year and With that, I will yield and, um, ask for a motion to adjourn. I think, I think Commissioner Lyons had you. Can I get a second? So a motion from Lyons and a second from Schwartz.
A motion from Lyons in honor.
And a second by Schwartz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. So, uh, we will go ahead and close this Livingston City Commission meeting on January the sixteenth